Okay, it's time to call the meeting to order. Sandy, would you call, roll call please?
Councilperson Bruni?
Bruni?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yeah.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody here this evening. I invite you to make comments on the items on the agenda as they're shown. And tonight, item number four, is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. Item number two, do any of the council persons have any conflict of interest on anything on the agenda this evening?
No.
Okay. Consent agenda, item number three, A, approval of agenda, B, approval of the minutes of the October 27th, 2015 council meeting, C, consideration of approving Sac City Main Street parade permit for Sac City Chamber Main Street on December 3rd, 2015, and D, claims. Is there any discussion or questions around A through D?
I would move passage of consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve consent agenda, A through D. Are there any other questions or any further discussion? Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Hanson?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number four, is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. Are there any this evening?
Please. Any south calls? Do I need to watch?
Yes, please.
Okay.
This will be very brief. I would like to make an apology to Kay Christian, Frank and Minnie Strain, and the ESC baseball boys for the lack of interest in the city in placing the last three flags and the flag poles, which would take about two hours before veterans' day. And it was a commitment that Ross and I had given to them, that they would be up by then. I have contacted the administration and nothing has been done. So I would like them to know that it's not the lack of effort by Ross and I. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anything else? All right, I'd like to move to five miscellaneous, and we're going to move F to A and A to F. So right now, we will do F, and they're not here. So, consideration of Ross Simpson's geothermal permit?
Did he contact the office or anything today, Sandy? Okay, he asked to be on the agenda, so...
I talked to him, and he actually has no permits. He just had questions about the work.
Okay.
And I thought he was gonna be here, so...
Okay.
If he arrives later, we can always take it up when he comes?
Right, certainly we can. Curtis, are you ready to do consideration of creation of Sac City Recreational Trail Committee?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to mayor, get some more, too.
Thank you.
I am... I'm here to propose the creation of a recreational trail committee for the city of Sac City, Iowa. I'm sorry that this is very last minute. We haven't had a chance to go through this proposal, so I'll just go through it quickly. In 2013, the mayor appointed me the mayor with task, or the committee chair of a task force to study the viability of doing a trail from Lakeview to Sac City to connect with the Stock Rail Trail. We determined that there were no landowners that were interested in allowing us across their land without litigation. We determined that we would be able to go down a road, widen a road, to create a trail between the two towns in easement. It would be, and that it would be very, very expensive, approximately $3 million to get to Higgy Park, for instance, from Sac City. And that's pretty much what we found on that. At that point, the task force was suspended, the task force of the year, as all mayor task force do, it became officially not a thing anymore. We are in the middle of a proposed trail route that will go from Spirit Lake to Carroll, and ultimately Des Moines. And the Stock Rail Trail Association and the organization at Spirit Lake, there's a woman that heads it, I don't know her name, and I don't know the name of the organization, but we've met jointly, both as the mayor's task force in Sac City and with the SRTA, the Stock Rail Trail Association, with her at Lake Sadies for one meeting, just to put together, or to get a rough idea of where the trail would go. Right now, the trail is proposed to come from Lakeview, up M-54, through town, and then out M-54. It would then go north through Hema, over to Storm Lane, and so forth and so on. There's a number of different organizations between here and there that are concerned with their own piece of the territory. What I'm proposing tonight is creation of a city committee that would take care of our part of the territory in Sac City, and work with other organizations adjacent to Sac City to make sure that everything goes smoothly.
Hey Curtis, what has changed since our last discussion about this? And you said to me, you thought it was pretty much impossible because of the cost and because of the difficulty in where the trail would go.
On further conversation with members of the SRTA, I learned that, and one of the proposed committee members, I learned that there are multiple grant and funding opportunities through the state and federal government to assist us, that make it less impossible.
Okay.
So if we're talking million, we're talking like a million dollars per mile, there might be something that takes the edge off that for us. And if we go down to the scope of this proposed committee, we can see that it would be very concerned with what we're actually going to do inside of Sac City.
Right.
Rather than spending a million dollars a mile of our own money to widen roads to outside of town, this would, this committee would be charged with determining the route through town, let's go through these, determine the best city loop to maximize economic interactivity, determine a route that would have the least number of intersections, determine a route that would be of a satisfying length to a typical biker, research council direction to apply for grant and funding opportunities, and ascertain and report the real cost of the project. Also, it would work with these other groups to find out where they're coming in to town and out of town, so that we can create a smooth transition between the two areas.
Okay. I noticed that on here, it speaks about the John Chris Trust money. In working with those people, I know there's some stipulations about that money, so there would have to be discussion with those people, because I know there's...
There are multiple organizations in town, not limited to things like the SDC and the John Chris Trust, that are, may become involved with this project, if it becomes a real thing that's happening.
Okay.
So it's just included on there as a possible.
Okay.
Since the trust doesn't know whether it's gonna survive the lawsuit.
Right.
Or whether it's going to include a trail as a beautification project.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that it's been, it's been in the discuss, but no decisions whatsoever have been made, and we're kind of up in the air at the present time, so...
That's my understanding, too.
Okay.
The, let's see, where are we at here? The benefit of this being a city trail, I want to go through one small piece here. Lakeview, the way they did it after they got the Stock Rail Trail, they decided they want to go around Lake. So in about the mid-2000s, they, there were a group of concerned citizens outside of the scope of government that just said, hey, we're gonna put this together and bring it to the council. Well, it's a very long-term project, as you can tell by the year, and the council is moving on to phase two right now in Lakeview. I would like, I'm proposing the creation of the city committee, so that through the appointment process, longevity can be guaranteed for the committee, rather than five people who may be interested today, but three years from now run out of time. Someone can go off the committee, and it would be just simply a matter of you guys reappointing. And then also, obviously, it would allow you to appoint a person to keep the city's finger in the project. That is kind of very short, and I'm not a very good public speaker version of it. Do you guys have any other questions?
What are the economic, I know that there are many economic benefits of having a recreational trail. What are some things that you see would be benefited, beneficial to Sac City for having a trail such as this?
Well, it goes without saying that people coming through are gonna spend money, you know, whether we're riding by the popcorn bar, certainly we'd want to make sure that they have access to the bars, because that's the thing, or downtown. I'm sorry, say the question again.
So what would you perceive as being the economic benefits to the community?
We'd be able to tap into that group of people that like to ride their bikes for long distances, you know, and have something new to ride on all the time. We would be the beneficiary of vast numbers of tourists who go to new trails just because they want to ride on new trails.
If you...
And there's more of those being created all the time.
And if you look up on the economic development websites, recreational trails are one of the biggest things for young folks these days. There are more bike riders than there ever have been, and they spend money in your community. And I feel, I've always said, I feel like if we miss this link with the lakes, we've missed a big opportunity. And the Lakes region really wants to hook up with that whole trail.
Well, and mayor, I just don't...
It's been a heartbeat. I really thought it was important to our town.
I want to make sure I'm not accused later on of being guilty of fear of wrongdoing. They're gonna come through Sac City. That's just gonna happen. Three of the SRTA people wanted to come through Sac City.
Okay.
So them being one of the key players in this, that's gonna happen.
Okay.
It's gonna be about our ability to represent ourselves as they do that, so that we're not caught off-guard with another organization saying, okay, we're ready.
Yeah.
What do you guys got?
I see, I see in here you've talked about a five-member committee, or perhaps task force or something. I mean, lots of times, something that has a specific goal, the task force, but would there be a benefit of using a seven-person committee slash task force, that would also have some representation from not within the city limits?
That would be, that would be at your guys' discretion as the appointers. I think there would be a benefit to that.
I mean, so that we can feel that at least we're beginning to reach out to the area and not, I mean, this is something we want to work together, but I know some of the people that are really interested in this may not live within the city limits, and if we could do like a seven-member committee and say that a majority of them had to be residents of the city, would that be something that would be feasible in your...
I agree. It'd just be about making the appointments. How do you guys feel about appointing non-city members to city boards? I mean, you already do it on the Hometown Pride Sac City Committee, is that a thing elsewhere?
Library, I think, also has one more, and the airport has a county representative on it.
Well, when we were meeting, actually, we had a fellow from Ford Dodge that was so interested in it that he came to our meeting. Now, that's reaching out a little bit, but there are some from out in the country that are very involved in biking.
I would like to see it.
And I think it would be good to have them involved as well.
I would like to see something large enough that we could incorporate some non-city residents in it.
I agree.
Thank you.
Not me to be the one doing all the talking, so...
I agree with what you said.
You being in the community of the bikers, you should be able to pick out some of the people that have an interest that would stick with it, that we could recommend. I mean, we're gonna rely on other people that have the interest, instead of just picking somebody who, like you said, is only gonna be there for a short duration.
Well, I have approached four of the people.
Okay.
I, of course, have an interest, being a biker and having sat on the 2013 task force.
Sure.
There is a member of the Hometown Pride Committee that wants to be on it. There's a member of the Stock Rail Trail Association that wants to be on it. There is a member of the Timber Main Street that wants to be on it. And there is a member of Sac County Conservation that wants to be on it right now.
That sounds like a very good combination.
It isn't bad. They're ready to be approved on November 24th, if you guys create this thing.
True.
There were people that were very fired up when we started this, and we just kind of reached a dead end, because of money.
Well, it was a lot of money to just run up against.
Yeah, so...
I want to be clear, first of all, these people wouldn't be coming onto the board as representatives of their group unless their groups wanted that.
Sure.
Just, I'm just saying that these are people that are on those groups.
Well, in essence, the more people involved, the better, yeah.
I agree.
I would move to establish a seven-member committee or task force, whichever language we want, for the exploration of possibilities of a recreational trail in and in Sac City and connecting to other areas, with a majority of the members to be representative, appointed from within city limits.
Works for me.
Just a second. Motion has been made and seconded to create a seven-member task force to work on the creation of a Sac City recreational trail.
These people, sorry, that you just mentioned, are they within the city limits? Are they not within the city limits?
The Sac County Conservation person isn't.
Okay.
The chief of person isn't.
Everybody else is?
Everybody else is.
Okay. I'm just making sure we have the majority.
Well, you'll have to appoint each one at the...
I mean, we'd have to appoint them, but I mean, by doing it that way, it gives us the option of appointing people from outside of city limits.
But I'm just thinking those were good people that you mentioned, so if that's what it was gonna be.
Okay, I should probably add this, and a seven-member task force, with two of them being from outside our city limits.
With the majority of them being from within the city limits.
Yes.
So it could be four-three.
Four-three, yeah.
Okay.
A motion is on the floor. Is there any other discussion? Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Perry?
Should we do it now?
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis.
Jim Johnston has asked if we would move F up, because he needs to leave. So we are going to do F now, which is consideration of approving Ross Simpson's geothermal permit. Ross, would you like to come forward, please?
I'm Ross Simpson from Luton. If you don't know me, I've been an HVAC installer my whole life, and we also do geothermal installs and geothermal earth loops of multiple kinds, directional, board, vertical, and slinky loops. I made a handout, is it okay if I hand you each a couple sheets of paper? And I made eight, I'm not sure how many that...
Thank you.
Make sure that you get one.
Have we got enough?
All right, thank you.
Yep, I think I've got one more. Anybody else? Okay.
I'd like to see it.
Yes. So it's a real simple handout. First off, do you care if I stand?
No.
My coming here tonight is twofold. The first thing I wanted to do is ask for a permit to do an earth loop for Matthew and Cindy Wallace's home, which, to be completely honest with you, I don't have their address, but they live to the east and south of where the swimming pool is. And actually, Matthew's here tonight as well.
Actually, though, of course.
Yeah. We would, in that instance, if we were going to do an earth loop and geothermal there, we would want to do that, and have to do that according to DNR regulations, as a directional board or a slinky loop. So that's one thing that I wanted to be here tonight. The second reason I wanted to be here tonight is just to take a little bit of your time and try to explain to you the best that I can, and I'm not the expert in the field, but I've done it a while, what geothermal heating and cooling systems actually are, a real brief explanation of how they work, how they function, and what we're trying to do with them, and then also talk a little bit about your special situation in Sac City here versus some communities, because your aquifer that you're drawing water from for your well, or multiple wells, is a fairly shallow aquifer. And you've got a chart that I pulled off, and actually, I see that there's a better chart, whoever this gentleman is sitting over here, he's got a, I took the well log from when one of the wells, which was next to Wallace's, was drilled in 1960, and he's got a different chart, maybe that's one that the city has, but it looked to me like it's pretty similar. So, I'll try to get this real quick. Briefly, what's geothermal? Geothermal is a process where we move energy from one place to another in order to heat and cool a structure. And a heat, so it's a geothermal heat pump, and it does just exactly what it says. It moves heat, or pumps heat, from one place to another. I like to tell people that every one of you has a heat pump in your home, if not, three or four, or five or six of them. And people look at me kind of funny when I tell them that, but your refrigerator's a heat pump, your de-freeze is a heat pump, if you have a de-hidifier, that's a heat pump, if you have air conditioning, that's a heat pump. We all have heat pumps in our homes. Let's look at a refrigerator. A refrigerator doesn't make your ice cream cold by putting cold into it. It makes your ice cream cold by taking the heat out of it and putting it into your kitchen. If you've ever felt the side of your refrigerator, it's warm, that's the energy coming out of the milk and the butter and the ice cream. The geothermal system is exactly the same as that. We're trying to move energy from one place to another. Geothermal, we're trying to get it from the ground. So we move energy from the ground, the refrigeration process makes it warm enough that we can actually heat a structure with it. So, I'll stop with that. And if you have a question, stop me. Geothermal is generally considered to be very environmentally friendly. They're very efficient, upwards of 400% efficient. So for every unit of energy that we use to move energy, so in our case, electricity, we get about four times that much energy out of it. So, straight, if a person was to use straight electricity to heat a structure, they would get one unit of energy for every unit of electricity that they would use. So geothermal is four times as efficient as straight electric. If they, if you have air conditioning or an air source heat pump, typically, geothermal is more than twice as efficient as that. So very, very efficient, very eco-friendly, because of the low energy usage for those. So what I handed out to you, the first page there is a typical vertical loop install. So what is done there is a driller, a certified well installer for the state of Iowa, or by the state of Iowa, has to come in and do these bore holes. What we're looking to do, they're typically called wells, and that's really a misconception, because they are not wells, they are just bore holes. So we, you come in, you drill anywhere from a four-inch to about a six-inch hole, depending on who's doing it and what size pipe is to be put in. You go down in the ground, you drill a hole, you take and bring the drill rod back up, out of the hole, which leaves an empty hole full of slurry. You take a piece of polyethylene pipe that, if you look on your diagram, shows it going down with a U-bend on the bottom and coming back up. That's exactly what's done. You take, however long the bore hole is, or deep the bore hole is, you put that much pipe down and back, and along with that pipe, you, by code in Iowa, that hole now has to be grouted shut. It's specified by the state of Iowa, it has to be grouted with a bentonite or a cement, a cement type. It's not like concrete, it's a, it's a cement, real fine cement. Typically, geothermal guys are doing bentonite clay. So that hole is pumped from the bottom to the top, full of bentonite clay, to seal it. Couple reasons. One, mostly because the DNR has specified that they do not want to have contamination from one layer to another, to another, to another. So the bentonite clay helps prevent that, so that you don't get cross-contaminations between different aquifers. Because some aquifers are, have better water than others, and you try not to transfer that. Okay, the other reason would be to assure that we have good contact with the earth, with our pipe, because we're very dependent on having that contact, because if we do not have contact between the pipe and the earth around it, we're not able to exchange any energy. So, these holes are pumped back full of clay. If you, if you look on there again, simplistic, they're tied together at the top, they come into the home, they're tied to the equipment, and you circulate water and an antifreeze solution. There's where I think some of the rub may be with what's happening here, is what type of antifreeze is used. There are lots of different types of antifreeze. Specified by Iowa, anything below 20 feet, which is considered a well in Iowa, has to be propylene glycol, which is a food-grade, in quotations, it's called a food-grade antifreeze. It's, propylene glycol is used in many food products, many, many products, like pharmaceutical-type products. It's also used in the meat industry. We did a house in Des Moines for a doctor quite a while ago, he asked me what we had for antifreeze, and he told me, went after I told him, that they use propylene glycol as a laxative for some people. So, I took his word for it, I didn't try it. So that is the type of antifreeze that's specified below 20 feet. If you have a bore hole that's below 20 feet, by code, it has to be propylene glycol in Iowa or a food-safe product, which, that's the only one that I know of. Some shallow earth loops, people use methanol for an antifreeze. Some people, I've seen windshield warts or fluid used. That's, I've seen that in a couple of do-it-yourselfer projects. I've never seen an actual well driller use either of those products. So, you know, it, if you have a reputable person that's doing the work, that's certified by the state of Iowa, they're going to, they're going to do it correctly.
I would ask, right now, if you've looked at the specifications that the city requires, and if you've applied for a permit to do this well.
I talked, are you Jim?
Yes.
Okay. I had a conversation with Jim a month ago, two months ago?
Day before yesterday.
Well, and we talked yesterday.
Okay.
And he said, he said, according to what I told him for Wallace's, that what we would want to do at Wallace's would be approved. What I'm asking is that you would consider modifying the rulings that you have now, or modify... would consider in the future, for, for people in the community to, to do vertical loops? Because at Wallace's, we have enough room that we can do a horizontal directional board loop, because they have enough ground to do that. Probably most of your people in town that are homeowners in town don't have that much room, but, they do have room for a vertical loop. So, is there a way for them to, to install geothermal in their homes and satisfy your concerns about protecting your aquifer? And one of the things that I would suggest is, since, if I was to apply for a permit for a vertical loop in the state of Iowa, I have to go to the county to apply for that permit, to the, to the, why can't I think of it?
Sanitarium.
Thank you, Roger. I have to go to the sanitarian to apply for a permit. They have to come out and inspect, make sure that, yes, it's within the specifications. In SAC City, we'd also have to apply for a permit through the city of SAC City. And your specifications are more stringent than what the state of Iowa's is, and that's okay. But, what has happened here is that your specifications are so stringent that most people are not going to be able to do that. So, is there a solution? One of the things that I would propose to you is that, since, since I would have to come to you as a city to get a permit, that you would say, okay, if our aquifer is at 175 to 200 feet, if, if the aquifer that we're getting water out of is in that, that depth range, and if you look at the well log, and that one's tough to read, this isn't, this is a lot easier to read than the one that I got off of the website. Almost everything that you have from 170 feet to zero is clay, glacial till, and a little bit of gravel.
Now, explain what glacial till is. That's not solid clay.
That's correct. Glacial till, glacial till is dirt that the glaciers basically shoved up and deposited. So, it, it can be different types of soil, it can be a hard-packed soil, it can be a loose soil, it can have sand and gravel in it. So, it can be lots of different kinds, it's not like black dirt that we have out here, but, it's not hard clay either. So, my, my proposal is, could you possibly amend your ordinance that would allow for, let's say, half-depth earth loops? Typically, an earth loop, a vertical loop in Iowa, they're going to want to drill about 170 to 180 feet deep, and they're going to do that multiple times, depending on how large the structure is. Well, 180 feet is going to run right into the top end of your aquifer. But, 90 feet to 100 feet, if you do half-depth loops, would not. So, that would be, that would be something that I would ask you to consider in the future. Again, it's not affecting me right now, but I would ask you to consider that in the future, that if you have someone that wants to do geothermal in the community, that you would say, okay, but here's our specifications, you know, we're concerned about protecting our aquifer. This is what we would, this is what we would require. Because what I am looking to do is, I am looking to have a certain number of feet of pipe buried in the ground. It can be, it can be horizontal or vertical, it doesn't make any difference. I just need a certain amount of pipe so that I can heat or cool a structure. So, if, if I'm allowed to drill vertical holes on a piece of property, it's a homeowner's piece of property, and we have to do twice as many of them, except they're just half as deep, I'm still happy, you know, and hopefully, we've protected your, your aquifer at the same time. Any other questions? I, I don't want to run on long, and, and, but I do want to, you know, answer anything that you might.
I actually have a question for Jim, based upon some of the things you said. The chemical that's most typically used, I'm sorry, poly-
It's called propylene glycol.
Propylene glycol. Is there, does DNR, do you know, Jim, does DNR have any standard as far as what a safe level? Because obviously, it causes diarrhea, which-
No, no. And when they say it's food-grade, does not mean it's edible. And my concern is, they say it's safe today, we're about 10 years down the road, they find something small that isn't safe. And when you talk about well depth, or static water level, at one well is 50 foot, the next one is at 98 feet, and the other one is about 115. So, you're talking, almost 100 feet of water above the bottom of the well. So, when you're cone of depression, when you start pumping, you're pulling in water from a long way. And what DNR says is anything within 1,000 foot is considered a risk score of three, which is the highest. And like I told you before, our rules say 1,000 foot. DNR suggests a two-year capture zone, which is actually out further, which would be about 1,500 to 2,000.
And we're currently at 1,000.
And we're currently at 1,000. I just don't think it's worth the risk to contaminate everybody's water in town, or, I mean, I'm sorry that our, our aquifers are in town. For unusual, a lot of community, most communities, the wells are outside city limits, so it's not that big of an issue. I mean, we spent two years on our source water protection plan, which DNR signed off on as a good plan, and I just think it's, it's not worth the risk.
Well, can I address one of those quickly? And you've got a board, can I use the board? If that's our ground level, and we drill a hole in the ground like that for a water well, so this, I'm talking about your water well. And let's say that this is the gravel that you're absorbing water from. If we have a static water level of 50 feet on one well, and maybe it's 100 feet on another well, what causes static water level to rise above the aquifer is the fact that the ground is sealed above it, and that somewhere 150 miles from here, that aquifer is higher than it is here. And so, the sealed ground above it, and the water that's in this aquifer has pressure behind it, causes the level to come up when you drill through it. So, you can have, you can have a, and I'm sorry, I'm blocking here, if you wanted to You can actually have what's called a flowing well, where the water table back up is high enough that the water, instead of being at 50 feet, runs out of the top of the well.
That's not our case.
That's not your case. So, you know, that's-
When I talk about the cone of depression, is when you turn your well pump on, your water level starts going down towards the pump, and the deeper your cone of depression is, the further you're drawing the water from. And actually, when you talk about the structure of the, of the ground, the only well we have that has any clay packed is the one at the Gophers. The rest of them is all sandy and gray till. So, there is no definite layer of permitability. It's just open.
So, what's the difference between what Russ was talking about and what Scott Austin wanted to do when he-
He wants, he wants the vertical loop, when he's within the 1,000 foot.
And that's what Scott wanted to, right?
Yes. Now, Matt can do the horizontal, but he has to be outside 200 foot, and it can't be more than 20 foot deep. And he has the room to do it. And as far as restrictions on people in town, I mean, this map right here, it's this right here, so you've got all this town here, you've got further north of Main Street, it mainly affects the southern part of town.
But that's the 1,000 feet?
1,000 feet.
But you told me you want to go to 4,000.
I want to go to 1,500.
Okay.
And that's the two, that's our two-year gap.
Just, just for, for sake of discussion, we're actually going to do a slinky loop at Scott's.
Yeah, we're driving the curve, and there's the pole.
So, that's what we're, that's what we're planning on doing, which is a horizontal, it's a type of horizontal earth loop, it'll be about eight feet deep. But, the antifreeze solution that's going to be in that loop will be propylene glycol. So, it, it will be the same type of glycol or antifreeze solution that would be used if it was a vertical loop or, or a directional board loop, so.
But you're talking 160-foot difference, or about 150-foot difference in 20 foot to 170 foot.
Yeah. But your argument is, is that, is that we're drawing water right down through everything, so I'm, what I'm saying is, then, why would they allow us to do that?
Well, we can change it.
Well, I know you-
I'm just saying, we're going by what DNR suggests.
Well, I talked to Russ Tell, who is one of the DNR's top people on, on water wells and geothermal. He was a, his family was, they had a water well drilling business down in Dayton. I talked to him, he's, he suggested that we find a compromise, and he, he said, I, you know, I told him what, what half holes. He said, well, as long as you could stay above the aquifer, I don't know why that wouldn't be a good compromise. Again, that's, that's him, that's me saying this, and, and you've got Jim saying whatever to the, so.
Are there other cities that have, that have the, half the distance of the aquifer in place?
That have the what now?
You're, you're suggesting that we-
Oh, oh, like half of a depth? To be honest with you, I don't, I don't know that there is. I know that there would be cities that would have their own restrictions, that could be greater than what the DNR would, would say, but I can't tell you that, that there would be one that would say, you can only do a half-depth hole. I, I can't answer that. I, we've drilled, we've drilled vertically in a lot of the counties around us, and have not read into that restriction, but I can't say that there aren't.
Well, I doubt, there will not be any kind of a decision made on the spot.
Yeah, and that's fine.
So, it will, I'm sure, be taken under discussion, and we look at each one separately anyway, so.
Yep.
My, my understanding is that our current rules has it, if it is outside of 1,000 feet, it can be approved by the, by Jim and the city administrator, which doesn't have to have to sign off on.
Okay.
Where people, yeah. If it's within, what, 200 feet of the well, there's, there's no possibility of doing anything.
Actually, all.
200 foot, right.
Between the 200 to 1,000 foot, you can do the-
Loops.
The, the horizontal slinky that you're talking about.
Yes.
And that's, I-
Outside the 1,000.
And that, so that doesn't require any council action on our part for, for those events to happen. So, I mean, that's, and if you're, I'm really glad that Scott's able to do this, the slinky, you know, I mean, the loop, I mean, and I'm glad that, you know, in some ways, one of my former students was talking about his ranch house that he lives in, in Wyoming, and he says, well, it's, it's a real conscious house, the only problem is it's got a dirt basement, and in the winter time, rattlesnakes come. He said, so we were sitting there, looking at a tornado coming, and trying to decide whether to go down to the rattlesnakes, or whether to wait out the tornado. And, you know, in some ways, I think, I can appreciate many points of view here, because we're trying to protect the environment through, through geothermal, and we're trying to protect our aquifer, aquifer as well. And, you know, how do we balance, we want the rattlesnakes, we want the tornado, which, are they going to be there, aren't they going to be there? And, and I mean, I think that, I appreciate all the efforts to decrease our carbon footprint, I think that's really, really important, but I think also, I appreciate the efforts to, you know, but where, where is the balance?
Yep, yep.
I would certainly be interested if you could find any other cities that have had the type of proposal that you were suggesting that's in place.
Good.
And like I said, most communities' wells are outside city limits, so they don't run into the issue. Surface water, you know, like the big towns, Des Moines, places like that use surface water, so you don't really have an issue there.
They have other issues.
I can help keep our water, thanks.
We do have a water committee, so they could take this up and have a discussion around this.
So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Russ.
Okay, we'll move on to B, which is consideration of approval of park custodian agreement with Shelley Quail.
And your packet tonight is a copy of an agreement with the Quails that was submitted as part of the details with the park board. There was, Bruce, you did mention there was a small, minor change in wording you thought should be made.
Oh, on the second page, the 1, 2, 3, 4. About the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth paragraph, probably submit an invoice by the first of each month rather than on, was one of my questions. Do we want a weekly log, on the first page, item 4, is a weekly log of park activities throughout the year, or is it just during the time that the park is open?
I looked back, and last year, they did it all year. They did do it all, last time they did it, they did it all year, even during the offseason.
Yeah, leave it at that, please. And there are no problems with potential unemployment or anything with this, without any of the stipend, right?
It is a stipend. It is not any, it is a recognition of reimbursement for costs associated with, with equipment needs. And they're required to provide an invoice in order to be paid for the stipend.
When would they start?
Soon as they can move into the house. We are, the park board is currently working with the current custodian about transition.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve the park custodian agreement with Shelley Quail.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the park custodian agreement with Shelley Quail. Is there any other discussion or any further questions? Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Ross and Perry?
Thank you. C is consideration of resolution number 2015-21 entitled to fix a date for a public hearing on establishing a financial lease agreement.
This would authorize the city to go into, you're required to do a public hearing for the purposes of doing a lease-to-buy program. If I remember, two years ago, I think it was, the auditor came in and said, you're supposed to do this, so, this would meet that requirement we've proposed.
So, you're making a motion to-
Set it here.
To settle hearing date.
I would move passage of resolution number 2015-21 to fix the date for a public hearing on establishing a financial lease agreement.
I'll second it.
And you have that date in?
Yes, November 24th, at the next council meeting.
For the purpose of a leasing and inclusive-
Pickup.
Correct, paying for-
We were just going to ask.
Did someone second that?
I seconded, because Curtis standing up.
Good.
Answer this question.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution number 2015-21 to fix the date for a public hearing on establishing a financial lease agreement, and that date will be November 24th. Is there any other discussion? Questions? Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. D is discussion on water tower branding.
At the last council meeting, we discussed a little bit about the, the fact that if we want to put the new symbol on the water tower, that it would cost $12,500 to do so. At that time, I just simply presented that to the council for the purposes of discussion, so that at follow-up meetings, we could discuss if the council did want to do this, how they wanted to proceed forward with actually funding for this project, the- this is on top of the standard painting cost. I think we covered that in pretty good detail last time. We pay an annual fee, which covers the cost of doing the painting. Uh, this is, this twelve thousand five hundred specifically pertains to the logo and the artwork associated with the logo itself.
Did you find out if they were gonna maintain by our agreement after the logo was installed?
Yes, they would be required to do so.
Good, thank you.
And there would be no extra charge for that, then?
Correct, that is correct.
Would it be feasible to pay for this? A third from the general fund, a third from the gas fund, and a third from the water fund?
So, what you would be looking at, Bruce, is a grant from the general, or from the, um, gas fund, a partial from the general fund, and a partial from the water fund.
Right.
So, you would set the fee at about...
Forty-one sixty-six, forty-one sixty-six, and forty-one sixty-seven, if my math is correct.
Who would you wanna give the extra dollar to?
We, we can take it out of the general fund. What, what will be the, uh...
I guess my thought is, we paid for this branding, we might as well start using it. We paid for Blue Space, and we bought this car. That was our reason for doing it.
Now, they have notified Jim that, um, they won't get to painting ours till next spring. So, this, this is a project that would occur during the next, painting cycle next year.
So, payment wouldn't be due until after completion, correct?
Correct.
I would move to, uh, to have the logo put on the water tower as it's repainted, funding at one-third from the water department, one-third from the general fund, and a one-third as a grant from the gas department.
Good, okay, I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the water tower branding, with the payments coming one-third from water, one-third from a gas, one-third from the general. The total amount being twelve thousand five hundred dollars?
Yep.
Is there any further discussion?
I have a question. Do you know what other avenues you're going to be using for the branding? I mean, what other, are, do we have signs?
There's some planning that's already been in place. Of course, internally, we've already been doing some work. There's been some tentative work done on a new s- flag. Uh, there's been, uh, we've already replaced our cover, our letterhead paper. We've already done the trash tags. There's been some work about moving towards incorporating it into the website. Uh, there's been some discussion with the business, uh, improvement committee as far as rolling it out, using it with the chamber organizations.
Street signs?
And then, I've got quotes back for coloration that would match with it for new street signs. There's not a funding option built against that right now. That's something that will probably be discussed at the finance committee discussions, but the, that is something I'm prepared to present to the finance committee this year.
It just seems like it's an awful lot of money for putting on our water tower. And how many people are going to see this? I understand the brand. No question there, but that's an awful lot of money for, and how many people are gonna see it? How many people are gonna drive into town and see that?
It's also, I think, being proposed for the, uh, the entrance signs out of for the billboards that are gonna be on Highway seventy-one, and redoing the billboards on Highway twenty.
Talking about the police cars, city vehicles.
It's, it is a lot of money. I, I agree. I think, I guess my feeling is the water tower may be the most visible project that we do have. And if we're trying to encourage people to use the brand, maybe, I, to go back with exactly what is there with the Sac City and different, the different colorations. I, it, it's a lot of money. I was a little shocked at how much it was, but I guess I kinda feel like, how many years do we get out of a paint job?
Well, they'd be responsible for touching it up, so in essence, you could sustain it. As long as we're continuing to pay them.
No, I mean, it, it, no, it is a lot of money. I agree with you.
But then again, our water tower, like you said, is one of the more visible things in town. When you come on M fifty-four from Lakeview, I mean, that's right there. You notice it. I look at it all the time. I come from Lakeview, and that's...
Yeah, but you live here. You're no, you notice it. You know, somebody coming in, that's not necessarily, I don't believe what they're going to see.
Probably not, no. You never know, though.
I don't know about that.
Water towers stand out in towns. I look at water towers when I go through town. Yeah.
I, I, all I will say, Susan, is that
You never know.
the number of people who have had fun with the quality-on-top logo would indicate that quite a few people see it.
That's true, yeah.
I mean, it, I mean, it's
That's a good point.
I mean, I know that a lot of people said, oh, so you have, what do you have on top in your town?
Yeah, what quality?
Okay, we've had a first and a second. I will call for a vote.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brunin? Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Five miscellaneous, six, uh, excuse me, six public input on solid waste matters.
Uh, there's V, E.
Oh, sorry, um, E, five E, is third reading of ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash two seventy-one entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by Amending Provisions Pertaining to Chapter Ninety-two Water Rates. Excuse me.
No, this is not to help pay for the water tower. This is, uh, this is just for same-day service for unoccupied properties.
No phone calls or any questions or anything on it still?
Um, I haven't. Sandy, did, are you aware of any? I haven't received any.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, ordinance number two thousand and fifteen dash two seventy-one entitled on ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to Chapter Ninety-two Water Rates.
Second.
Could you, uh, refresh our memory on what the, uh, rate will be? Or what the amendment will?
It doesn't change any rates, other than it adds a provision in for same-day customer service.
Sure.
And under same-day customer service, it does not require a deposit if you meet the one, two, three, four, five, six criteria built into it. I'd be happy to give you a copy of it, so you could look over the sixth criteria.
Okay. Did we have a second?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash two seventy-one, the ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to Chapter Ninety-two Water Rates. Is there any further discussion? Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brunin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, now we will move to six, and that is public input on solid waste matters. Is there anything?
I have not received any.
Item number seven is council forum.
Please don't forget, uh, Thursday night is the county league night in Wall Lake.
Six-thirty, is that right?
I believe, yes. And the host is going to be the county supervisors. They're gonna be discussing, uh, a handful of items, I believe. And, um, and of course, next Wednesday is the Northwest Iowa League of Cities meeting in Sioux City.
So, anything else, council members?
I went to, oh, wait, sorry. I, I, I went to the, uh, annual budget training meeting today. And, um, they are starting to talk seriously about, they're recommending to cities now that you should not anticipate receiving the full, backfill from the state for the commercial industrial property tax rollback starting next year. That we should anticipate we're not going to be getting that money.
Not all of it, but some of it.
Their belief is somewhere between zero to fifty percent is what we'll receive, what we are supposed to get.
That's encouraging.
Yeah, that was one of the better pieces in these they had for us.
Well, thank you, Al.
It's pretty depressing.
Is there anything else? Nope?
That's up to you.
Okay. I entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brunin?
Yes.
Perry?